I don't need it, and this is not.
And then, the administration of our president, who had basically entered office. To the point, 33 years ago, we just didn't want to be there. So the first of the initial initiatives couldn't handle this. Sure, probably never in the history of our staff personnel here. The internal staff personnel to improve, to improve the unit.
One more hour.
I'm just tired. You know, you travel at the beginning of the week. You know, my flight got in. My flight was on time. It was full of WrestleMania fans who had gone to Bees Rutherford.
That would have been me. That would have been you.
Yeah, well, I was sitting next to this young, African-American guy. You know, he was college age. So I sit there, and he's a big guy. He's taking some of my space. I was already annoyed. And then, you know, about 3 minutes later, he looks over and then he says, "Dr. Logan?" I said, "Yeah." And he says, "I'm so honored to be sitting next to you." And he was sitting, and I found it was his first flight he had ever taken. He's a student at University of Nebraska. I'm like, "Yeah." He's a young man. Of course, I was like, "Thank God I was nice to him." Because I was feeling like, I'm putting that little bar down in between. Right? Be on your side. Don't touch me. And he was such, of course, at the end, he was like, "Can I take a selfie for my mother?" I said, "Of course we can." So, he said, "Is it okay if I put on Facebook?" I said, "Whatever." He was very sweet, but it was funny, because I was, you know, first of all, I gotta get better about taking these late flights. But I'm trying to get back, you know what I mean? I'm trying to get back.
Get back into that room.
Yeah, so I can get back.
Yes, indeed.
It's a good meeting on Monday, too. Don't do that. Don't do that. Don't do that.
What do you call that position that you're creating where the person works with our teachers as well as you now?
Teacher partner, teacher position.
Represent more cities of our district.
So you start, we're working with kids starting in 10th grade through college age.
She's putting out a proposal, so you can have the person work there.
Oh, yeah, for whatever. That's a big deal. That's a big career. I can send you a copy of the job description. We haven't posted it yet, but we're about to.
And that person will be hired by the time of fall.
He said, "To the grade."
And then, the inclusion office, which we're talking about, basically, who's just creating them. So the bishop is under, Carlos does that.
I was really gonna counter, uh, counter, I might say that, on board, that strategy of, uh, countering, I don't know, there's no reason. You know, strategic, yeah, you know.
Yeah, I agree with you on that. Let's strategize with you.
Yeah.
Shabana and I, I'll just agree on that. I think we're missing Ricky and...
It's time.
And Luann.
Luann's here. She's right here. Hi, how are you, camera? I like the flat look on your hair. Looks nice.
Pursuant to Section 841412 in Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Ball. The purpose of this workshop is for staff to provide information on the Student Assignment Plan Boundary Process. Roll call, please.
Cassidy?
Here.
Gotti? Hallman?
Here.
Cracky?
Pearlman?
Ryan? Smith? Snipe?
Here.
Snow?
Here. My laptop just decided to update. I can't. It automatically doesn't. I blame Rob. And I think Mr. Smith had a work engagement. So I believe, starting on an information item on Student Assignment Plan, Dr. Logan, do you want to open this up, or?
I just want to thank everybody for coming, and those people who are watching at home, thank you so much for tuning in and being engaged in the process. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ray? Or Scott?
Well, I'll start off, too, by thanking also the staff here that has been working on this project for several months, from the Student Assignment Plan to the new boundary process. In the audience, we have a lot of our members that have been working on this. And if they could just wave their hand as well, the team that's been working on this, and Melissa Comine, and Jacobs as well, has been helping through this process. So I want to thank them. We have three people from the team, and Mr. Richter at the table. They, as well, have been working on this since we started. So on the board agenda, we have the presentation, and then we also have the options that were created as part of the process we followed so far. You have copies of the options, and you have copies of the timeline that are included in the PowerPoint. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Richter, who's been leading this from Cooperative Strategies as we work through the presentation.
And one second, sorry, I forgot to mention this. If we can let our guest go through his entire presentation before we have any questions and bring that up. I believe it's a 20-minute presentation, and then, board members, if you have questions, then we'll open it up for questions and comments. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Dr. Logan, members of the board, thanks for having us here tonight to give you an update of this process. And so I'm just going to kind of take you through this. Again, we should take about 20 minutes to get through this. If there is a clarification question, please don't hesitate to ask it. Sometimes you use terminology that, if that's unclear, please stop me. You get in this process, and terminology just slips right off the tongue all the time. So tonight, we're going to talk about the purpose. We're going to update you where we are in the timeline. Two processes at the high school, and then the South Area process, and then some of the updates that we got from focus groups and feedback, and then give you the schedule for our community meetings, our open community meetings for the next few weeks. So as a result of the 2018 bond, two new elementary schools, a middle school, and two high schools are going to be built. And I think that, I want to take this opportunity on these, on these couple first points. Is that when you're building schools, the result obviously is boundary change of moving students. I think sometimes in a boundary process, because it becomes pretty emotional, and it can be, we're affecting students and families' lives, and we understand that. We do, we might lose sight of the fact that five new state-of-the-art schools for Omaha public school children is a positive thing. And when students get moved, they're going to be moved into great schools, regardless if it's an existing school or a new school. And so, the process is intended, this process is intended to be as objective as possible when we're looking at making boundary changes. And one thing we try to explain in this process, and I think it's a harder thing to overcome than we realize, is that, once you make the realization that somebody has to move in a boundary change, when schools get built, students move into new schools, which affects other boundaries. And it sounds simple, but once that, once that kind of gets in your head, that, okay, we're moving, we're gonna, we're gonna have to move some students here. I think then the process becomes, okay, how do we do that that best suits the needs of the communities, and has the least disruption as we can to the student population? And so you keep those in mind as you're going through a process like this. And again, understanding that you're probably going to impact less than 25% of your students in a process like this, too. Although, the impact that you have is, we have to pay attention to that. Our timeline also is very much consistent with the idea of communicating, communicating, communicating. You know, these schools will not open, you know, for another few years. As you can see here, we have the Fort Creek Elementary in 2122, the high schools, and the 10th and Pine Elementary in 2223, and then the 42nd and Wy Street at 2324. So we have a few years to prepare our communities for movement and logistics of how those moves work. And so the plan should be, is when a decision gets made on boundaries, is then, then it starts the process of, okay, how do we get this done? What are the best ways that we can acclimate students to their new communities, and how do we make those transitions happen? And we've got a good two-year timeline to do that. And so I think that works well. But tonight is a presentation about the updated process, and where we are, and how we got to where we are today. So, the process intentionally started with meeting with Curriculum Instruction. We wanted to be sure we understood the impacts of, you know, what happens when new schools get built, what kind of programs are going to happen? Will they impact other schools and the programs that they serve? And so we want to meet with them, very successful meeting, and they've been part of our process all along. They've attended our boundary committee meetings, they've been part of our focus group meetings, to make sure that if there's any questions around curriculum instruction, that they're there to help provide that support for our community members. We've had several internal work sessions. I know it says internal work session, but we've had several internal work sessions of everybody on the team getting in the room and trying to make sure we're vetting through all the data as much as we can, to make sure that that is clear and concise and accurate as it can be. And so it's several hours of working with the team before we ever go out and meet before, with, with community members, to make sure that we have everything that is visually appropriate, because it's, there's a lot of data that has to go through here. And so making sure it's clear and concise, and even consumable to an extent. Understand, there's a lot of it, but it has to be consumable, and not, and making it as transparent as possible that there's a lot of data out there. And so we spent a lot of time internally to do that. We met with a group of, and I'll explain these boundary committee meetings, but groups of principals, teachers, community members, to help us build boundaries. And I'll explain that as we get into each specific one. More internal work sessions, and then meeting with focus groups after the boundary committees delivered their products of the maps that they created, and the focus groups, and I'll talk about those also. Moving forward, some open community meetings in the next, you know, three to four weeks. More internal work sessions, because that's what it takes to get this done, and then certainly another update and presentation of recommendations to the board. And so I think we've held the timeline pretty good. So the high school, we're going to start with a high school overview. Here's a kind of a current look at the current state of high schools. When we do boundaries, and I think this is important, when we do boundaries, we look at where students live. And the reason we look at where students live is because, obviously, you have a student assignment plan that allows for a lot of transfer across the district. But when you're building new schools and trying to determine capacity and utilization of those buildings, going back to the basics of school boundary, which is, the basic of a school boundary, if we go way, way back in the history of it, was that if you built a boundary, and it had this many kids, you built a school for that many kids. And so there's been, there's kind of an expectation out there, and it's not so prevalent in districts that have phenomenal choices you do. But if I live in a neighborhood, or I buy a house in a neighborhood, there should be a seat in that school for where I live. And that's a, that's an understandable premise for all, for communities. Now, again, you have choice, and that's a great thing for your students, and they take advantage of that choice. But it does ignore the fact that if they decided not to have the choice, that the school in their backyard is a choice. And so, because there's not a seat there, if there wasn't a seat there, it wouldn't be a choice, which takes away the whole premise of choice programs. And so when we go back and we do boundaries, we look at the live-in attendance. And when you look at the live-in attendance, you see there's, across the district, there's an imbalance of the utilization if I were to say, how many kids live in this boundary, and how many kids there were. Now, some of it's a little deceiving. This word data can be a little deceiving, because, you know, we have a shared area in the Burke and Northwest area, that obviously has an impact, you know, on, on schools that share boundaries. Okay? Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, but definitions are really important. What is live-in utilization?
Okay, live-in utilization is how many kids actually live in the established boundary and the capacity of the school that's in that boundary. So if I have, so if I have 100 seats, and I have 50 kids that live in the boundary, the utilization would be 50%. Okay, yeah, thanks for that. And so when, when you go through a process like this, again, one of the things to establish is, okay, what is that? And is it balanced? Because what happens in time is that this district looks tremendously different than it did when these schools were built. And populations shift. We don't pick up buildings to move with populations, and so we have to, we have to kind of reset ourselves. The discussion that happened, and then also, one of the things we point out is that the current system has 16 elementary schools that split to the high school level. So another thing we try to look at in, when we do boundary realignment, is the idea that students have both a geographical pathway and a programmatic pathway. And the trick is trying to balance the two. And so if a student wants to stay in a neighborhood school, the quote neighborhood school, there should be a continuity there. And if the idea, and if it's a, if it's a priority for the district that we work in, because the priorities are different everywhere, that, that continuity from K to 12 is important in the same community, then we take, we pay attention to that. We don't want big splits out there. So we just kind of point that out. And so as you, as you look across the district, you can see some of that imbalance that occurs. So what we did, and our process did, and these pictures are very, very intentional for here, is that our process involves the idea of basically taking the district down to bear, to bear nothing, to rebuild the boundaries as the populations are today. Establishing some rules about, about how you get to fill those buildings across the board. And so, we met with first a principal group. We met for one day with principals to take them through the process of how to, how we do this process. And you can see, there's maps that they work with, and there's, then there's tools that they work with on a computer that helps them as they rebuild the boundary step by step. Our next then, and it was intentional to meet with the principals, because we really wanted to get their feedback when it came to, okay, what are the, where can we make this better, or what are the things you're seeing that we could improve on as we go and work with the community? And of course, the principals were very helpful with that. And so we got then with a school community representative group, and a total of 10 groups creating boundary scenarios. Working one, you know, one group, and one group, and one group. And again, when you get in a process like this, the idea is that there's a set of established rules that you try to conform to, that, that tend to make sense when you're building boundaries. And so the first, and so you can go through these, and so what we talked to the groups about were, first of all, try to attempt to assign 100% of elementary attendance areas to one high school. And so currently, those 16 splits, so, because typically, high school boundaries are built by a culmination of elementary boundaries. That's been the traditional way to build boundaries over time. And so, and they set good parameters, because elementary boundaries typically follow pretty good geographic boundary lines, pretty good neighborhood boundary lines, which means that you can get that continuity going up. Attempt to eliminate shared high school tenant zones, so eliminating those shared high school tenant zones, because with two new schools, and one new school in particular, you can, you don't need it anymore. Attempt to balance a free and reduced lunch. Now, this is difficult. Again, just because of pockets of neighborhood, you don't control where that happens. And I think this is where groups found it most difficult to do. But they also understood that one of the, one of the primary, you know, one of the big things about the student choices, or the choice program, is we can balance that with choice. And that's a great thing about choice, is to be able to balance things like that. The live population, again, we talked about live population, but we wanted to pay attention to enrollment, too. We have charts that show live-attend, where, where do students live versus where they attend, and it shows percentages, so people can pay attention to that. And they can see, well, this school has a lot that has from this area, or, so they can just kind of see that data. And then finally, looking at the total high school population to be 77% utilization, which means that after the two new high schools are built, the total utilization of high schools will be 77% of its maximum capacity. Now, so one of the things that we asked the groups to do is, can you get the boundaries where every school falls within that 77%? And the reason for that is then, every, every school then has a percentage equal amount to draw choice into their buildings. They can still be a big school, and they can still be a small school, but the equalizer is, if we're all the same utilization, we have the same opportunity to attract students to our buildings. And so, trying to get to that premise, and again, not easy to do because of the way boundaries lie. And so those were the premises that they tried to work in. With 78 elementaries, we use these planning units, and you can see the planning units, or these smaller units, that eventually what they did was, they started to just fill in planning unit by planning unit, to start to get to that 77 or 80% for each high school, because each of those planning units has the number of students in it, 912 students in it, and they can start building it, and building it, and building it. So what happens in a process like this is that when you have 10 groups around the table, they'll go through this process, and they'll, they'll work through this, and they also have this tool here, where the minute they changed, so they could change a zone of a high school, it updated their data right away to show them the new utilization of a building. And so, and you could see live, as they were filling in the charts and coloring in the maps, what it did immediately to capacity and utilization of facilities, which became a very useful tool for them, because then they could just, okay, if we can't fit it here, maybe it has to go here. Again, still pay attention to all those parameters, including geographic parameters and all those things, major streets. And the reason you have, you know, community members do it and principals do it, is they, they know their neighborhoods. You know, you can look at a map all day long and say, something makes sense, and then you start to drive that, and it would never make sense to make the map that way, you know, draw boundaries that way. And so it's important to get that kind of input. So what you, what you find is that, and we tell them, is that when each group starts to get to work, some groups get it done pretty efficiently, others take a little longer. And so, but what you can guarantee is that when they're done, every group will tell you, we've got the perfect boundary solution. And then at the end of the day, you have 10 boundary solutions, because they all came up with something different. And, and, and the beauty of this is that all those different perceptions about how a boundary should lay out kind of rise to the top. And it allows us to see the benefits and challenges of why certain, certain catchment areas that we have might, may or may not fit into a, to a scenario. And so with that, they created 10 options, and we mapped all the potential boundary and planning unit percentages assigned. So how you get to narrow down the options is that you take those planning units, and you just do some analysis to say, okay, there's Planet Unit 1. All 10 groups said Planet Unit 1 goes to Burke High School. Okay, so you get those eliminated, because everybody agrees on that catchment area. But where you start to develop your options are where they start to fall in that, I don't know, 40 to 60% of the groups kind of disagree on a catchment area, or one of those planning unit areas. And so that's where you start to do the analysis of, okay, this is how options can be developed then. Is because, why is, why is Planet Unit 75, why are five groups saying it belongs here, and why are five groups saying it belongs here? So it gives us some, some options to play with when we're talking about trying to balance this utilization, transportation, you know, all of that. So it gives, it gives them some opportunity to do that. And so when they did, when we did this, what we, what we found out is that it had a lot of similarities. And there are just a few catchments or planning unit areas that start to differ. So, we came down to three options, and these are in front of you, right here. But I'm just going to give kind of the high-level overview of what, what they kind of create. So, did that just move on me?
Yes.
Oh. So, I don't know, Andy pushed a button back here, sorry. So our option one, what we found was that the live-in utilization then ranges from like, from almost 70%, so 69.6 to 86.7, which isn't actually very bad. I mean, it really does kind of balance the utilization of the buildings pretty well. There's only one elementary school that splits at a high school in this option. And the greatest, this actually offers the greatest balance of live-in utilization of all the options. And so, as best you can get it, based on all the parameters that we talked about, this one actually balanced it better than the other two options did. Option two, the live-in utilization kind of spreads out a little more on this one. In this one, two elementary schools split at a high school, Beals and Druid. But this, this is expanding, 156 and Ida Boundary creates a live-in utilization imbalance between Burke and 156 and Ida High Schools. And again, part of the, part of the trick of this was that elementary schools aren't quite established yet because of the two new elementary schools. And so, we have an opportunity, when that kind of gets established, to look at those boundaries, to see where they get, based on the final decision of the elementary boundaries. So it gets a little confusing, but that's all you can do. And if you don't know what the final kind of utilization that building's going to be, then you just, you kind of put it as a placeholder. The final one actually then narrows that range a little bit from about 66.5 to 90.5%. In this case, six elementary schools split, and the reason for this, the reason for this is that it would be that this option, the groups left the southern boundary of Central on Center Street, and that Center Street currently does split six elementary school boundaries. And so, but they left it intact, which means it's just a status quo in that case. This has a least change to that central part of the district. Which, again, the balance of this is trying to figure out, when the decision was, when internally working, about how far we should go with boundaries when it came to high schools. It had to come to the conclusion that you had to impact all the high school boundaries. There was no way to just hit the adjacent boundaries, because the domino became too great. There wasn't enough kids to fill in that northwest part of the district, and then the south was going to take care of itself. And so, but what happens if we're doing that one school, it takes over kind of that north and northwest section, which means those become underutilized, which means you have to figure out the domino of it. And so, that decision had to come, because we were going to find incredible imbalance, and what you were going to find yourself in is, three to five years, going through this process all over again. And then, and a student assignment plan that likely couldn't get to the balance you needed it to get to, because it doesn't offer that equal opportunity to attract students for all high schools. So it puts it on the level playing field. So those are the three options in there, and there's certainly all kinds of data in these sheets that you can look at to get, to get you there. Now, in the South Omaha, this one became a little more complicated, and for good reason. The live-in utilization here is a wide gap, okay? And then, and this is, you know, regardless of, regardless of building schools, there was probably going to have to be a need to look at boundaries at some point in the south, just because of its tremendous growth, as we know. And in this case, there's only one elementary school that splits into a middle school, so that's been, I mean, that stays pretty consistent, which is pretty amazing because of the growth down there. The middle school live-in utilization ranges, again, across the board. Now, one of the reasons we're building new middle schools is because of that, that incredible utilization number that you see there. Again, same process, and so you can see on the right, you know, it becomes a little more complicated here. And what complicated this was the grade configuration, was we were trying to take K4, K6, 7 eighths, 5 eighths, and we're trying to combine all of that together. And, but, one thing that we had to establish early in this process, and one of the reasons talking to Curriculum Instruction was very important, was to try to establish continuity of grades, of grade configuration. One thing that was talked about in the bond planning is that, how do we get to a more consistent grade configuration for, you know, program delivery? Consistent program delivery across the district. And so, that became a big turn in understanding how to get to where we needed to get to with building two new elementaries and a middle school. So with the three schools, of course, you know where they are. The first consideration was making sure that we were going to stay consistent. One of the big things about staying consistent was that, because the question that we got asked is, why did we stop at the line we stopped at? Because once again, you could keep going, you could just make it the next one, and next one, next one, and all of a sudden, you're doing district-wide elementary and middle school program, which frankly would have been a nightmare, because that is, because you're not going to change some grade configurations out there, because it was decided a long time ago that those would stay the same. And so we drew that line purposely, knowing that we could, we could reach this consistency there. To attempt to assign 100% of elementary to one middle school, again, keeping that continuity, that geographic continuity when needed. Live-in population, enrollment population, again, trying to balance those. Now, looking at the total area of middle school population to be 93.5%, which is still pretty highly-used middle schools. That is still a big utilization number. Where the total area of elementary schools be 83.8, which is a pretty good target number to get to. You know, we always look at elementary schools, or middle schools and elementary schools, if you can get somewhere between that 85 and 90% utilization, you're in really good shape. And especially here, keeping at that 83, knowing that growth is likely. And so there's room to grow and expand into these, into these schools. Again, now, the geographic areas stretch from 78 now to 165 planning units. There are planning units that had smaller amounts of kids in them, but geographically, the way the planning units were made, that just occurs. And so, we found that, that groups were asking about, can we split that one, because it's got more students than the other one, or how does that look? You know, some of these fall in, like, there's a boundary right here that has, like, this major road network here, but there's no kids that live on that side. So we had to show people where kids were and where they're not, because that makes a difference when you're drawing those boundaries. So what this did, again, was allowed them to take an approach according to how they wanted to take approach. Some decided to start at the new, new schools and build from there. Let's fill the new schools to that, that balance of utilization that we want, and then go from there. There's a group that started at middle schools, and they found themselves working a really long time trying to work backwards. But it was good that they did that. That was one of our first, our principals group that did that. But it was good that they did that to show the different perspectives of how you could build boundaries from the elementary all the way through eighth grade. So again, we use the same type of tool that modified it, and what this did also was showed them what the K6 utilization did to the K5 utilization. Because just taking one grade out can improve utilization of a facility. And so, this was intentional to take them through this tool to note that, remember that you're... that you're taking a grade out or you're going to add a grade into those middle schools. And so I was able to show the tool. So again, live updates, as soon as they made the boundary change, the, the planning unit change, they were able to see the, the change in utilization by building. Again, 12 options created here. Same process, trying to get down to narrowing the options based on similarities of what the groups created. And again, so here are the overview of those. So in option one, this option created 100% geographic feeder pattern for all middle schools in two.
I didn't.
I, I, I apologize. So, but 100% feeder, that's, that's pretty impressive in how complicated this was. The result though is an imbalance in the middle school utilization, where you get, once the new school proposed at 98.7, that might be too many kids to start a school with. But it got 100%. So you see how the, the parameters conflict, can conflict each other very quickly? And this is what the community groups and the focus groups struggle with. Is that, well, I reached that goal, but I didn't get to that goal. But that's why boundaries aren't a perfect science. Because those parameters will conflict themselves. This has the highest number of students to change their home attendance in this option. And again, so if you want that 100% feeder. Three elementary schools in option two split at the middle school level. The result is better balance though of those middle schools. And the lowest number of students that will change their attendance boundaries. That's pretty good. But we will have three elementary schools that split. Now, again, some are used to that, so that may never matter. And so that's okay. And then option three shows three elementary schools that split. Result is greater balance again, and the fewest number of middle school students that will change. And so all have these benefits to them, but they all have challenges to them also. Which then goes into why we met with small focus groups. So we intentionally then brought in focus groups that were more homogeneous in nature than our community groups were. So we brought in groups of students, groups of principals, groups of parents. And to get a perspective from a single group of, of people. Knowing going out to the community, we're going to get that big diverse one. But we wanted the perception without having the influence of, like, we want a student to walk in and really tell us what they were feeling. When, because the conversation changes with an adult standing over the same map. And so the focus group was intentional to be that way. So we can get the perspectives from every side. We talked about, in the focus groups, the student assignment plan and what that meant. So though, even though there's boundary changes, student assignment can offset you moving in the process. We tried to explain again, all these balance of live-in utilization, all the parameters that we did, trying to help them understand, we want both a geographic and programmatic pathway as much as we can get to. So as they got through all those discussions, you know, the feedback that we got were, I mean, about, and some of the questions that got out there. Do we present the options to create effective boundary solutions? That was the first question. So we have to test that. That's a fair question to ask. Did we go through a process that allowed the most input that we could get to create new boundaries for five new schools? Was there enough data there? Was there enough input with sessions of getting as many people to the table from the ground level in? Have we provided enough data? Well, I mean, there's a lot of data. So I think the feedback was, yeah, there's plenty of data out here to show this. And then any additional feedback regarding, this is what we heard. You know, some groups prefer to have that 100% elementary, but there's some that really doesn't matter. And again, this is such a, this is such a school district-specific preference that there's no right or wrong answer to this. Some neighbor, what we don't want, we don't want elementary schools that go 95 and 5%. We don't want to take, you know, 40 of the kids that have grown up with their other kids and take them to another middle school, certainly. But certainly those larger splits of 50 or 60% people are kind of used to. And so can we get there? Opening new middle school close to its capacity, agreed. It could be a challenge. Worst thing you can do is, you know, put modulars on a building you just built. That's, that's perceived very bad. Challenge of balancing the live-in utilization with proximity to school. As, you know, neighborhoods are different. And so, you know, the center of a neighborhood gets defined differently in today's world than it did 20 years ago. And so even to say neighborhood school anymore is a tough term. So also, what is acceptable for live-in utilization of new high schools? Again, if the live-in utilization is higher or lower, does it really make a difference? And again, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. But from the team's perspective, and one of the reasons of building parameters is that it came down to the idea that you could stay big, you could stay small. You've got two choices here. But the equal opportunity to attract students based on your capacity was our goal in this. To add additional items to maps and tables to make them easier to understand. Sometimes it's about just putting more clear road networks on there so people can distinguish a road on the map. Or can you put that water line on there so people know where the river is, or something like that? So making suggestions like that, so when we go out to the community, it is very clear where those boundaries sit as, as we start to talk with the community. So our next steps. South Omaha will be next week. We're going to meet with the community at, at South High School for the elementary and middle school boundaries in the gym. The format of these is, is presentation and small group work. We continue small group work. When we go into these presentations and we have the small group work, we're not asking the community to vote for an option. That is defeating the purpose. The purpose is to make sure that we're extracting all the benefits and challenges of each option that we present. And eventually trying to eliminate as many challenges as we can and get as many benefits to then combine the options. Very rare, we walk into boundary community meetings where the boundary stays the same. It is rare for that to happen. Because the community really does have that, that one last look at it. And it's not even the last look, but has a look at it from just a different, another different eye. And so all of the input so far, all of the principals, all of the students, all of the parents, all of the teachers that have been involved in this process, this comes to a validation point with the community to then vet it one more time with them to say, okay, how can this improve? So it's not a vote, and it shouldn't be. Because what votes do is they start to pit neighborhoods against each other. And that is not the intent here. The intent is, is that whatever school you're going to, you're going to get a good school. Now we're going to show you how we're going to get there. And so, but we have to get there with the least disruptions we can and explain why we got there. Then of course, the high school meetings. I mean, at each high school, it'll be the same presentation at each high school. Same format, again, looking at each option on its own merit to then extract the benefits and challenges of those in small group discussion. There's a boundary website and it's opening tomorrow. That's going to have all the options out there before people get to the meeting, so they can go through them. They can look very closely at those maps and they can see all the data before they walk in the meetings. We have found that, you know, this has been, in 20 years of doing this, this has been an eternal struggle of, do you release options before the meeting? Well, we've decided, yeah, it's a great idea. Because then people have time to look at the data. They have time to construct their conversation and not have to just react to the conversation. This will be offered online also. And so there's a, a lot of opportunity beyond just a community meeting for people to participate. And that is the process overview.
One, one second before, so you'll go out to the community and present, and then on June 10th, you would take all the information you gathered from the community meetings and present that at our next board workshop?
Yeah, so, and, and it's just a small, small correction on that. We'll take all the data from the process and accumulate it to get to the June 10th summary for you. Yeah. Because, and, and why I say that, and I think this is important to note, is that the first steps of the process that worked with those boundary committee working groups is just as important as the community group work. And so it's a, it's an iterative process that builds on each other. So it'll all accumulate together to get to that. But yes, June 10th.
But when you do go out to the community, you'll be presenting these six options?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted for the board to know. Mrs. Crackey.
Are people going to know about the meeting? You said there's a meeting, April 22nd. And how are, at Burke? So how would the community know that they should go to the website to find the meeting?
We've been working closely with district communications and a comprehensive communication plan. There have been a variety of ways. It's on the website. There have been letters. Anybody who's participated in the process thus far has received an update. It's been in schools, it's been in the backpack newsletters that go home. It's, as I said, on our website. Robo calls before the meetings to our community, to our staff.
All right. The other question I had was, what are we doing to account for parochial and private students who may or may not choose to go in at middle school, at high school, or vice versa? I mean, how do you, they are in the community, they live in the community, so how are we counting them in this?
So it is difficult to try and understand what students might choose to not leave the district in the future with the opening of new schools. I think when Tracy talks about, you know, leaving space in some of our schools, not opening a school with right up to that capacity, making sure that you're looking at the possibility for growth and capacity, not just for students within the district, but possibly for students that, that might not leave the district in the future. But that is a very difficult thing to kind of put your finger on. Everybody's choice is kind of personal and their own on, on why they're choosing to go parochial or another public school district. So knowing what you're going to, to get back or to, you know, stop from leaving is, is tough to put your finger on.
So in our numbers, how do we account for that? Just leave a little bit of slide on there?
So how, how we accommodate it in, in utilization is that we leave space open for that return, in case that happens. One of, I mean, one of the early discussions was that northwest part of the district. That there is a lot of students that don't stay in the district. But what does building a new high school mean? Does it mean they come back? Or how soon do they come back? They may be ninth or 10th graders in another public school district that are just going to decide to stay to finish where they are. But that doesn't mean that their younger siblings might come in. So we have to leave some gap in that. And so I think one of the things, especially in that northwest area, we, we fully realize it's an unpredictable thing. But leaving the capacity in the buildings is the most critical thing to do. That way we have room to grow into them.
And we know in our southern part, in part of our city, we are having more numbers than we were prepared for as they keep coming. And so we have to keep being prepared.
Absolutely. And trying to, and again, that's why that 83% at the elementary in the south, I think is a good number. That leaves quite a bit of capacity in there for some growth to happen. Yeah.
Mr. Promin.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. One is, so we have the current live-in utilization statistics. First, where are those derived from?
So each student is geocoded in the district. So they are geocoded to their address match. And so we know where every student lives, according to how they report where they live, certainly. And so you just geocode them on the map, you overlay the boundary, and you count the number of students in the boundary.
Okay, so this only counts for current OPS students?
That's correct.
Okay, so there may be parochial students?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Another question I have is, what, how, how are the proposed live-in utilization determined? A moment ago you said it was an unpredictable thing in West Omaha, but how was it predicted in other areas?
So using, using the enrollment number that you have, okay? If we were to change the boundary today. And know that there's, there's some growth and decline in different, in different catchment areas that certainly Casey runs every year. But it's then just moving that current and then calculate it against the current capacity of those buildings. And so when I move a catchment area or that planning unit area and move it over, then it tells me that utilization number. And so you're just doing the same, you're doing the same divisible, just with a new planning unit in that area.
So there's no inputs for trying to predict the best we can of students who will decide, I'm not, I'm just not sending my kid to that high school, I'll go to a different district or, or somewhere else? No other factors are considered?
Well, there has, well, in your enrollment projection, it certainly figures that. Because there's a cohort survival that has captured that for years. A cohort survival methodology that you use in your enrollment projections captures all of that. Parochial school movement, building, decline. It captures that in all the cohorts year by year. And so a good projection, which you guys have great projections, very accurate year by year, somehow encapsulates all of that in the movement. Now, there is no way, there's no way to predict on an individual family member what they choose to do. So typically parochial is legacy. But I will tell you that we saw a decline in parochial in the downturn of the economy. So maybe it's some economics, but I can't tell you when that's going to turn either. And so again, the, the trick here is to make sure that you have enough capacity for either growth, but not having too much capacity for areas of decline. Because you have areas in the city of decline also. And so the trick is to make sure you just have a utilization that can handle both, both fluctuations of that. So yeah, I'm, yeah, even, so your number for parochial schools is going to stay steady. It's always, and it doesn't vary anywhere in the country, it's going to be 11 to 15%. It just kind of stays in that number. I don't know why. There's other things. You know, in Ohio, it's charter schools. When's the next charter going to pop up? Well, I can't tell you that because they just come on a whim and then they go on a whim. And then also, but I really do believe that the biggest unpredictable thing is, is the call for Northwest High School come to fruition of students that stay in, that, that will stay in OPS versus going to another, another public school. And so what, again, one of the nice parts is, is you're opening a school at nine and 10. You're not opening a full school, which allows for that school to grow into itself. And if minor modifications have to be made, then they can be made. But then, and so knowing that we do have some of these planning unit areas, and Casey's done the analysis to know what planning areas grow and what don't, we know that there's going to be some of that that happens. And again, there's, that's why there's no way we'd put a school at 95% to start in a high-growth area. We would actually kind of eliminate that from an option. Just the same as we wouldn't necessarily in a, in a no-growth area or decline area, let them keep a utilization at 65. Because then that doesn't help that area either. And so, you know, obviously we lend some expertise to this on top of the community input to give them some guidance to know that too.
Okay. I think my only other question is, I find it difficult to make a decision on, on what's best for boundaries without knowing what's next as far, as far as a student assignment plan. And I've heard those concerns from people, and I just don't know how to answer that. Because we can have any option, one, two, or three, and to me, they're meaningless unless we know what the other component is. And that being, what choice whole families have when these boundaries, whichever option is implemented.
So maybe one of the nice parts of being an outsider looking in at this is that my perception would be, how do I know how much opportunity I have for choice unless I have an established number of utilization that can choose in? So if I don't know if there's going to be 100 seats open, how can I create a student assignment plan that says there's 100 seats open? And so I think there has to be an established boundary to determine a utilization that allows for a student assignment plan to adjust within, to get the, to the buildings to their maximum utilization. So I think it is definitely a chicken and egg discussion, and it can be. But from, and, from a, from a standpoint of equal choice to buildings, we have to have an established number. And the only ways, the only ways to establish is to establish a boundary to do that.
Sure, I certainly agree with you.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's a different and distinct answer and question from, will there be any choice at all?
Sure, I mean, yeah.
And so, so I understand, like, to know the capacity is important, to know how much capacity there is for choice. But that's actually not the question. The question is, will there be choice?
Yes.
The answer, the answer's always been yes to that.
I know, it always has been.
Yeah.
Concerned that it will not.
And the intent wasn't to change that point of view in here. It was actually to keep that choice open and to leave those utilizations to the point where there can still be choice.
Great, that's.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood that.
No, that's, that's good to hear.
Yep, okay. Thanks.
Mrs. Gadding.
So I have a number of questions and, and going way back to some of the things you talked about and some of the things that we've talked about for years, I feel like one of them is middle school configuration and just that delivery of instruction consistently across the district. So I see the proposed grade configurations of 6, 8, but I guess I'm curious, and I get the question all the time, when is that going to happen district-wide? So is that a conversation, and maybe it's really from Dr. Logan Wright, of, is that a conversation that's going to happen? Or are we living with the parameters that we already have in place, in some places?
We currently have four, five through eight schools.
We currently have four, five through eight schools, and as we go through the process, especially around the student assignment plan, we will have to maybe revisit that. We did discuss it with our team, thinking about, we didn't have a full, a robust discussion, but we did have a brief discussion. And we also wanted to weigh whether or not we want to have a one-size-fits-all model, which is one way to think about it, or to have some variety in our school district, especially when we think about choice and school options. Right now, we do have some options where we have five through eight and six through eight, so does it make it more attractive for a district to have two options? That way, families could have some choice about which they are interested in. And also, utilization would play a factor in it, but it's something our team will be discussing and bring into the board's attention.
Perfect, thanks. So, one of the things I saw in this discussion was a lot of discussion about elementary school splits. What about middle school splits? Because I, when I talk to parents, and as a parent who's now gotten three kids through middle school, a lot of times, it's those middle school relationships that are developed. Elementary kind of can tend to come and go.
Sure.
But middle school tends to be those relationships that we develop and then move on to high school. So, did we look at middle school splits at all?
So, we did, and then, and because when we build it all up, when it all looks together and, like, all this together, it does, when you get that full continuity in the middle school, that whole middle school boundary does fit within the high school boundary. And so, we tried to maintain that as much as possible. I think it's a good idea that we identify if we didn't. That might be a good thing to make sure we communicate in, when we go out to the community. So, that input is very much appreciated, because that will be asked.
Right, and I'm just noticing it, especially in my area.
Sure.
And I'm also noticing, obviously, closer distance to the new high school than to the one that part of the community is being put in. And so, that's, so, those are the questions when you isolate one group of students, then does that change where that group of students, do they continue on in the district, or do they not, if they feel like they're not in a connection with their community?
Sure.
I think that's a concern I have.
Okay, okay.
I'm interested to know, or have you explained to us, the process through which you gain input at these community meetings? As you talked about, you know, not having people take votes, so I go back to thinking about when we were doing the 2014 bond, and of course, it was a lot of vote-taking, right? We all went in, and everybody voted at their tables. And so, just the expectation of what that looks like versus what you're proposing so that we, as board members, can maybe be more helpful in explaining to the community what they're going to see and whether, and that their input really is valued.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah, okay. So, when we get into the meeting, it's really a simple, a simple survey that they have in front of them, that what we're going to do is, we're going to present each option and stop the presentation, and each table will talk specifically about that one option. And they'll identify, after all the data has been identified, and what we've identified as kind of the overview. They're going to talk as a small group and identify where they see the benefits of that, what are the great things about this particular one, and what are the things that probably don't fit very well here? And so that will be the discussion for each of the options. As, again, not to necessarily compare them against each other, and the reason for that is that you may be, you may be jaded to one just because you like three better. And the point is, is that, again, I go back to this idea that if we start to take votes, especially in a boundary process, that the vote then becomes about, you know, Main Street neighborhood versus Home Street neighborhood. And there could be this idea that you're getting this choice because you're that neighborhood or this neighborhood, which completely takes away from the point of what we're trying to accomplish, is we're trying to accomplish good geographic balance, we're trying to utilize buildings to their maximum potential, and we're trying to keep the least disruption as we can of students. And when you get to that, then the vote doesn't come about like this neighborhood versus that neighborhood. So our goal really is to say that, at the end of the day, if we can eliminate as many challenges as we can, or at least identify where we couldn't, then we know how to prepare communities for the move that they're going to have to make. And so, the idea then is that if we take the benefits and we see common benefits of each three option, we pull those together to create one really solid option, and then take those challenges that I've identified that we couldn't eliminate, and make sure we communicate why we couldn't, and then get rid of as we can. And so that's the purpose of that meeting. And, you know, I wouldn't be completely honest if I didn't tell you I was concerned that we're just going to individual schools, because it takes away from a district perspective in some ways, that, you know, I could be at one school and have a different perspective than from another school, and if they were talking about it, they could understand why there's a different reason that I would agree with something versus not agree with something. And so, I feel like when we get into these, that we may lack some of that input, and that concerns me to some extent. So, but I also think that people can be very objective. I think they can look at it and see, first of all, understand why we have to do it, and then point out, you know, why their concerns are there. And look, frankly, this, the thing you can't get around is that what you're going to hear as board members isn't going to be the rah-rah, "Great, we changed the boundary." People who are satisfied with it and know, understand, aren't going to come out and stand on the lectern and do that. That's not the nature of any school community I've worked with. So, you can expect to hear some pushback, and as you should. I mean, people are concerned about their neighborhoods and their families and their students. But I will tell you that just because that's the only voice you may hear, doesn't mean that's the only voice that's there. And so hopefully, in the community meetings, what we can extract is eliminating that and really taking an objective view at each option. And that's kind of the goal of what we're trying to get to.
Okay, so as long as, as long as the input is, from each table will be gathered, I assume.
It will, it will.
And then, I guess that's where I'm trying to get to, and then that input will be used by you all to take a look at changes that, you know, may be appropriate for the boundaries, right?
Right.
And I guess I would look at the positive side of having it at every school. You're going to get very specific input from each particular area on how it impacts them, and they'll be better able to, I mean, I can't speak to how something impacts central or south as well as someone who lives in the area. And so I think that, I would look at it as a positive of, you're going to get really specific information about how people feel about their own particular area, and whether there's walkability, and whether there's accessibility on sidewalks and main streets and crosswalks and all those kinds of things. So, I see that as a positive. I do have one question on communication. Was there, so I know I've gotten communication specific to my school on when the meetings are, was there? And I don't remember it, it could have happened. Was there a district-wide email that went out to all parents for telling us the dates? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that.
And District Communications has also communicated with the media, and it was actually on the television this morning on one of the news stations.
So, perfect. No, that's, I just couldn't remember, get a lot of emails. So thank you very much.
I do want to correct one thing, though, as Monique is sitting in the back. On the webpage that's coming, I'm very excited about it, so I want it tomorrow, but it should be in the next couple of days.
Could we go, can we go back to the dates? And I know you guys have been working hard, so thank you, communication and district staff, for really getting these dates out. If I'm looking at this, and I'm a parent of an elementary or middle school student, I only have one date to choose, is there a possibility that we can add another date at Bryan High School, or for those families to be able, because if I can't come on the 16th Tuesday for middle school, I mean, that's three schools there. I'm out of luck. It's just something to consider, and then, knowing our district, we will have interpreters there as well for many of those families. But I think having, even if it's May 9th or one of those dates, another date for those families that won't be able to attend on the 16th because of that quick turnaround. Does anyone else have?
We will have the meetings, you know, there will be, are we going to stream these meetings? I'm not sure.
We had not planned on streaming them.
Okay, all righty. Okay, we'll take that into consideration. We did go from two to eight. My team is looking at me like, I love you all too, very much.
And that information will also be available online, too, to provide feedback if a family can't meet any of these as well. That information will be available on that webpage that Dr. McFarland referred to, as well as that survey that was referenced earlier.
And there will actually be a video in the survey that covers the same information that Mr. Richter just presented today.
Perfect. Mr. Proman.
So, at the end of this, with a final report and board presentation, how's that going to work? Looking at one option, two, three, is it going to come through the student assignment plan? How's that going to work?
So, it's hard to predict, to be honest with you, and I'll tell you why, is that the intent would, to bring you a recommendation, a single recommendation. We may walk out and with a community discussion that says, you know, two of these worked really well, or these blend well together, and maybe bring that back for a discussion before making a final decision. And again, and I'm afraid that's vague and not a great answer, but what I've experienced in a long time of doing this is that I don't want to give you a definite answer until I know a definite answer, as to not set an expectation. It is, again, the community input will drive what we come back to with, and it may just require, okay, here's what the community said, they like both of these types of options, where do we go from here? So, I wish I could give you a better answer than that, and, but I can't.
I guess that kind of ties into another question I think I just thought of.
Is your mic on?
Yeah. With the board being the policy-making body of the district, what input is being sought, and how's that being done from the board as to what they want to see? I mean, I agree with the parameter setup, so that's.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But when it comes down to the brass tacks, at the end of the day, when we give presentations, I think there's a lot of policy implications of what we want to see as far as utilization, capacity in different schools in different areas of the city, and how that will impact the ability to choose a school within the city. And so I'm wondering, versus mechanism by which input is being sought from board members?
Well, I would assume, and this is just me, that that will happen at that June workshop, when you present not just the community aspect into this, but then that will allow the board, if I'm correct, two months, the district to gather information. So that August or September board meeting, that final recommendation, we will have board input, community, as well as what the district initially put together, which I would like it to be one buttoned-up thing by time that final. But that allows us to do that at that June 10th meeting, and you'll also get the stuff from the community. If you have multiple schools in your district, or if you attend a couple of those community meetings there, you'll be able to experience what the community's recommending as well.
Because a lot of, I mean, I'm already getting a lot of feedback myself, and I like to pass that on as best I can, and, you know, folks from all the different neighborhoods in my sub-district are already pretty vocal about our open university and school charts as just at the top of their list and supports for them, so.
I did let Mr. Ray know, he's ready to receive all your guys' inputs from now all the way until the June 10th meeting. If there are things that you're getting from the community or things you want to see, to send that to Mr. Ray, and he's going to collect all that information as well. So when they do present, we have kind of some of the things that board members are hearing from the community members and stakeholders, just so we don't get to that, and, yeah, board members reading off a list of things, you already know what you're going to get.
Should pass those, you should pass those along now, I would encourage, if you're hearing from community members, that they can contact Mr. Ray directly, and you can also send those directly to him, forward those emails directly to him.
Well, I want to thank Tracy, Dr., oh, sorry, sorry. Go ahead, Mrs. Gadding.
So the one thing I would like to ask for, and I know we talked about it a little bit in the Student Assignment Plan Committee, is I would like to see us vote on this in September versus during the summertime when families aren't back in school, just so they're engaged. Sometimes it takes a little bit, when you're a parent, to get yourself back into the routine, and I don't want anybody to think that, no matter what the decision is, that we did it without, when they were on vacation, that week before school started or something, and then they're trying to deal with everything when school starts. So I just want to be respectful of our community on that.
I will make sure that it's in the September meeting that we vote on it, and assuming Dr. Holman agrees as well. We start school on the 15th, so probably the first meeting September 1st, okay, one of those dates there. Yeah, I can't think that far ahead. All right, well, seeing no other questions or anything, thank you, Tracy, Dr. Logan, Mr. Ray, Research, Curriculum, and all the staff that came today to help put this presentation on. We appreciate you, and the meeting's adjourned at 7:33.